Thank you for letting me at my toes, Grace.
And Vincent's background through the work that we're doing with Sugarman, you're going to see our students and our kids. And this is a preview of our website to come. Our students, our kids, our teachers.
Thank you. Madam President, Board Members, faculty and staff, definitely appreciate the opportunity to speak. The presentation I have here is going to be very abbreviated and very different. And a lot of root rationale behind us. You already have the information in this package. So I'll be referring to that throughout the presentation. And I know you all love numbers because spreadsheets are flying. As Grace mentioned, I had the liberty of basically taking some pictures off of our recent photo shoots. You can have, I think this is some column. We had her students here at Aces. So enjoy the pictures while we go through on the numbers here. I just want to express gratitude and blessing for being able to work here in this community. I have never thought I'd be here in historic South Central, serving this population and community. And I will say though, that is priceless. You can't add any dollars per centic. You get to see this day in and day out. You get to see the lives and what we can do here in this community on a day-to-day basis and what kind of way to be able to communicate that message. I've been working with private schools, schools in general, for a decade. And one of the things in dichotomy is finances are here and hardened education is here. And how do you marry the two? It's like I married my wife. My wife's a teacher on, you know, and we always have an interesting conversation every night. But I always look at this picture here. Well, I don't always look at this picture. This is kind of the memories that burn in my mind. I was having an opportunity to work with great staff for Liza and Michelle, especially this past month of really picking up the gap here in this organization. Our staff, it's not just Liza and Michelle, but also Big John, Garcia, and many others that really picked up and stepped in during this time here at the schools. And I'm grateful that Roger, because I totally have resigned from being there. So here's my overview. We're just going to go over three simple presentations. Again, it's in your board packet. Eleven months financials ending May 2019. The five-year capital expenditure plan as requested by the board members, board from last meeting. And a three-year operating budget cash flow that's been updated from our last presentation, our last time together. Mr. Fuorn Paul or...
Thank you.
It's great for me to have these pictures because they're not just the faces to make. And these are great pictures by the way. So how do we do? Financials for eleven months ending May 2019. What I want to do, I want for you to refer to slide page two and three in your financial package. And just high level, I wanted to start here by our ADA. Some really interesting stats that I want to point out. Although our ADA percentage was 93% on ours for the entire year, that actually accounts for the blip that we had back in January for the due to the work stoppage. If you take that out, our ADA was actually 95%. Decent, right? But obviously, there's more and more room for improvement. We started the year in total enrollment of 1799 students. We ended the year at 1767. That's an attrition of less than 2%. Again, it's pretty good numbers if you look at it, but there's always room for improvement here as, especially if we look when it comes to dollars per cent. Our ADA fluctuated about 4% over the years. We started strong, as you can see here, and obviously, we have opportunities here. Just making sure we end the year strong, and our kids, through doors, healthy and happy to be at school. And then only I have a story. I went on a little mini vacation in October. I took my kid. Oh, I forgot to call the school. And next thing you know, sure enough, you get the call from the school. Is your son okay? He's supposed to be in school. Hurry. Then we got, I dropped the file, said he was going to talk to the ADA. But again, these are opportunities here because as we look for future growth, here's opportunities where we can really serve our kids in a much better way by providing the followers, providing the care and the services to make sure the kids are healthy. You know, we don't necessarily need the chiefs and seats. We need to make sure our community is doing very well. So the ADA again translates into the bottom line. On page two in the packet here, I provide an executive summary of our financial performance for 11 months. Nothing's really changed since our last working. The same variances are still the same variances. Just a couple things to point out. Funding, again, has been affected because of the ADA. Our LCFF funding is going to come in a little short over here. Our federal funding is going to be a little short. That's actually because of timing. We had changes in our food services to where some of our boarding, we're a little behind on, but we'll catch up on that. As far as the business expenditures, other operating expenditures are going to be unbearable, $1.8 million to the budget. That is largely due partly because of staffing for the work stoppage, higher-than-expected substitute coverage, coverage for sped needs, and untapped legal costs. And as I'm moving forward, as I'm having more of the heavier hat of more involved hat with the budgeting process, those things will be obviously analyzed and just making sure we're doing our due process and controlling our costs. I'm going to cite Mr. Dr. Bates. He's been instrumental in identifying our sped needs and helping us actually staff a lot of our sped special education positions so that we're actually reading it all and outs, which is great because although it's additional overhead people account, it really helps us save on cost for all. So thank you, Dr. Bates. Pages three, four, five are just your standard balance sheet income statement. I'm not going to talk any racial metrics here because I kind of laughed this morning. We were blowing out the metrics for our financial performance. Once the recession comes, I'll start talking about those more in depth, but we'll save those later. Okay, so again, here's a little attendance, the ADA for general metrics. Any questions? Who are it?
No, we didn't want it.
She's a great teacher. This kid here is cute, just pointing out she's a hundred percent of the year. Capital expenditure plan. Pages seven and eight is the binder, is the fire capital plan. This is in working with Tom Dischich, Tom Lu, and Andrew Robles in our respective departments. We sat together and I told them, spend money. Spend, 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 with a reason. What we're going to do, we're going to take a tiered approach. We're going to try to spend sparer costs over five years. Basically, that allows us to do is be more prudent and more fiscal responsible in our capital expenditure plans. All the projects that we have here that pertain to capital expenditures are listed here. It's not necessary sense though, these are by no means what we're going to do. This is just for planning purposes. Obviously, as we go through the year, some things are going to rise to the top, then some things are going to be deferred till the next or following years. But I think this finally gives us a snapshot of how to really address one of the board's concerns about financial stability and longevity, that we're actually planning to get ahead of ourselves so we can take care of things like a chiller or an H5 unit going down, or making sure we have the appropriate one-to-one technology for our teachers. It also looks at things like mercy plants, freezers, convection ovens for food, replacing water, drinking waters, elevators, and so forth and so on. Part of the things that I'm trying to push here in the capital expenditure plan is not, let's not look at it as replacing costs. Let's look at it more as an investment and our initiatives. Because as we move forward into the 21st century, we have to take more of an initiative approach because those investments marry our education plans. We want our students to be 21st century learners, so we got to give them 21st century tools.
So we don't have anything in here for new construction or some of the things we can thought of?
Correct. Because those things are, those things are actually kind of special specialists that, you know, we'll develop later. But at least for now, I can now reasonably plan for the next five years with a proper cash flow, making sure we have the plans and the plans in place to execute these plans.
And is there, are these numbers just kind of estimates or do we, is it what's the significance of these numbers? Are they conservative or like?
They're kind of in the middle.
Okay.
And especially, you know, it's a very ambitious plan, as you can see. I'm trying to project to spend $2.2 million just the next year alone. So for the next few board meetings, you're going to see tons of proposals coming through. We're going to take these plans and start doing our due diligence and presenting to the board before we have execution met. Vity, as you requested, we looked at the roofs, just to make sure we have... Did you?
I did.
We looked at the roofs. We want to make sure we have total costs because, you know, we don't want to come up on the year 29 and say, oh, we got to replace the roof. And surprisingly, Tom can fill me in if I'm incorrect here, but our roofs are actually in pretty good condition. And we're, in some cases, in mid-year life, you know, mid-to-year lifecycle of these roofs. Now, that's without saying, you know, we can obviously do more, better things with some of those, you know, capital costs. But, you know, as long as I put away, as long as the school puts away $40,000 for the next 10 years, we'll have appropriate funds to replace the roof should we need to.
So, all right. So people talk about reserves and some of those reserves have a dedication to them.
Correct.
And some are not dedicated. So is that what you're talking about?
Right. Okay. A capital reserve should always, you know, you should have a plan like this. And you know, I need, you know, I have a football field, roof, 10 dams, or whatever, you know, and that's going to cost X amount of dollars. I need to reserve Y amount of dollars. And that's a plan behind it.
So when people look at our reserve, they go, oh, my gosh, you're such a big reserve. And it's not all available. Okay. I just want to be clear.
The funds are not earmarked as a legal matter. Like if we, as for budget, for budget purposes, if we're saying $40,000 a year are going into our operational reserve, it's not really an op, let's say it's an operational reserve, it's not really, but okay. But it's sitting there so we can use for the roof later.
Correct.
If there's something that happens where we need the 40 grand, we don't have to use it for the roof.
Right.
So I just want to be careful about our terminology, right? We're not earmarking dollars here. What we are saying is that it's there to help us replace the roof when we need it. And so we can justify having the size of an operational reserve that we have because of a bunch of deferred maintenance and capital improvements that we need to make and whatever it is, right?
Right.
You know, frankly, suppose have an operational reserve to run this school for at least three months, right? So we got a chunk of money. If there's some crisis, we got to run the school, we got nothing coming in. And then we got other things that we're going to use it for. And then there's something left over that we have to figure out how we want to invest.
But it was the LAUSD issue, you know, when they said, oh, you have all of this reserve. And they said, it's not all of it totally available. That was my point.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you for the courage.
Yeah. And also on the income, it's reduced by the amount that we're allocating to reserve.
Yeah.
I'm glad you brought that up. So I took a look, right here, there's Polly Hardman, Music Department, kind of cool. So I took a look at Edco as far as what reserves are. Our reserves are actually set by board president. It's not actually a legal requirement. It's actually, we have to set aside money per the Edco place. 5% is actually our designation. Right. So which is really interesting because I thought 5% was a hard number, but apparently it's not. So I'll stick to this slide.
What, is that total income?
Again, that's our designation. Could be total income, could be net income.
Or it could just be a dollar amount every year.
I think, I think the problem is, as I understand state law in AB 1200, you need to budget a contingency every year based on the size of your budget. The percentage goes down as the budget gets huger, which may or may not make sense. But there's nothing that requires a reserve per se as we would think of it, so it truly gets rolled into contingencies and that the carryover every year where districts get in trouble is when the carryover is negative. Okay. Yeah. Okay, right. When there is a carryover, they spend more than they bring in.
Yeah.
But in a charter school, which is a different entity to some extent than a school district, the logic of having reserves to finance your needs may fall out of bounds, right? So that's why we have them. But it's different than a school district would happen.
I appreciate you bringing that up because Mary and I had conversations about rebooting our finance committee and hopefully we can get those things off the ground. And then those finance committees will actually be kicking the tires and really researching and figuring out what their proper reserve levels are. This is the same slide from our last board meeting. I don't think we have a cash bomb at this point, but if we're not careful, we can actually be in an inverted position very quickly. So the reserve, especially that we can delegate to the finance committee, really think even, figure out appropriately how we should fund future projects for the school. But with that said, that goes into my projected career budget, which is, those following page in the binder. Same slide, or same presentation from the last board meeting. I refined the numbers based on our recent hiring changes. And I took certain liberties here because part of my responsibility is also making sure we control and cut costs. And not necessarily kind of the cost, you know, cutting costs like, you know, let's buy two erasers for every four students type of thing. But it's really, a really thoughtful way of taking advantage of this and seeing how we can be innovative in providing the right resources and a more efficient use. I've been trained, fortunately trained in previous lives that, you know, the goal for CFOs and for finance business office for schools is you want to cut costs and pay your teachers more. And that's going to be my goal mantra for it. And that's what, that's the heart behind this budget here. That, you know, it's going to be thoughtful in our budgeting to really, to bound you some, you know, kind of costs. I keep telling people I'm allergic to paper because we have laptops and, you know, and smart pads, smartphones. And so those are some really innovative ways and really cool programs that we can do that really help those cost down.
Just want to point out, you know, when we're thinking about cutting costs and paying teachers more, I'm also paying teachers more on the cutting cost side of things. I think we should be mindful of our goals and like, it's not just a matter of cutting costs, but where do we invest, right, as a potential pure cost cutting?
Absolutely.
So can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
You put your, print where your mouth is. When you talk about paying teachers more, the certificated salaries line goes up $2 million.
Yep.
How much of that is additional salary for existing teachers and how much of that is additional teachers?
My assumptions are always 2% to commiserate with co-lead raises. The LCF does know over the next three years. Surprisingly, all governments did, will bump the super club next year.
Right.
So I just use that as my metric.
Okay.
So yes, an appropriate increase should always be a 2%.
Okay. So then, when you move $2 million from one year to the next, that's a lot of money.
Yep.
So doesn't mean we'll have more teachers?
No, not necessarily.
Okay. Just checking. And it includes whatever we agreed to in January with the teachers as well, right?
Correct.
Okay. So it's part of the collective, that's fine. Both are good things. I'm just checking what the, what the combination is. I'm with you, I agree, you can never pay teachers more. You can always pay teachers more.
Absolutely.
So...
Absolutely. That'll be our central core mission, again, to commiserate with work goals and expectations. Any questions about the budget and clarifying things?
So based on your forecast, we got, we're forecasting the end of fiscal 2019, we're going to be $700,000 plus to the good. But the next few years, our operating budget is going to be flat in terms of adding to net, to net asset. And then in 2021, 22, we're going to be $225,000 and change to the good, right?
Yes. And obviously, we'll caveat it in three years' projection.
I understand. And we get the negative numbers just when you take our net asset and you say 5% is restricted because we're calling that a true reserve, we're not going to touch. Right? So I'm reading this right?
You are.
Okay. It's okay by me.
Questions?
Great show. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love the pictures, by the way.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Yeah, it's a good idea. It's, I like them.
Okay, so we're going to go back to the LCAP. Okay? And we do have a fairly robust closed session, so.
Yeah, basically, we've already approved the LCAP and the DLPAC recommendations through the items, but we did want to kind of bring forward just a few highlights and identify these and bring forward the actual recommendations from the DLPAC. It should go by fairly... Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's the overall LCAP. That's the DLPAC recommendation.
See, this is one of the tough things about having each individual school have its own petition, its own LCAP, because even though there is quite a number of overlap, there's still these things that are individual and specific to each school. Yes. Do you have your badge to get in?
That'll work.
That'll work.
I can basically talk through some of it and I don't...
We'll get you.
Okay, they, we got these numbers.
Make sure that all the doors have the... Thank you. I just got anywhere. Got your name on it? There. I love technology.
Maybe until some find that, I'll just kind of speak to a few things. I wanted to give you a brief introduction before the people come up and actually talk to your individual schools around the LCAP. Wanted to give you some, the LCAP has kind of changed a little bit since you. There are actually four different pieces that had to go into the LCAP. The only one that actually has to be approved this year are the LCAP. But there's also something that's now called an LCAP Federal Addendum that you might have seen in the packet. But the LCAP Federal Addendum, they added that on because they didn't feel like the LCAP addressed our underprivileged pupils enough. They wanted to understand how our federal dollars, our categorical dollars are really being used to support our homeless, our foster youth, our everybody to do research. So that's what the LCAP Federal Agenda is. They'll kind of get into all of the details of it, but I wanted to let you know that that's one of the additions. There's also something called an LCAP Budget Summary for Parents. Because the LCAP is such a huge document, it's real dense and in some of its reading and such, the California Department of Education wanted to ensure that parents were able to kind of see at a glance, at a summary level, how the dollars were being spent. So that's also something that's included. It doesn't have to necessarily be approved by the board because it is still in, it's still part of our actual LCAP. The other piece was our LCAP Stakeholder Survey that we talked about a couple of meetings ago, maybe. So the LCAP survey was used as a large piece of, we looked at our actions and services and made revisions. So in our last meeting, we talked about broad-based study, we talked about basic new campus. We brought to you a lot of the successes and the areas of need based on our stakeholders. So we used that as a huge piece of how we updated and revised our actions and services within that LCAP. Thank you. And then the last thing I wanted to share before we invite Ms. Rodri up here to start with Aces, is that the actions and services, we had about 46 actions and services in our LCAP. And as we looked at some of the other schools and dug into, like Long Beach, invited Redondo and some of these other, you know, large school districts, we noticed that they had like four goals and maybe 20 actions and services.
Yeah.
To kind of summarize what they were doing at the school. So working along, I don't know if this is interactive, but working alongside Vincent, he and I streamlined our actions and services. And we noticed that there was some redundancy in some of the things that we were speaking of in our LCAP. And so we really took time to focus, take a focus and streamline some of our action services to make it a bit more manageable and efficient for budgeting purposes. So I want to thank Vincent, I want to thank Susan, I want to thank Princess, I want to thank Rosie for the work that we did on putting this all together. And I'm going to invite Susan up to talk about our Aces.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Board Members. And I was going to move this because as a teacher, I like everybody...
I can see the PowerPoint, I can see the PowerPoint.
One more year.
Thank you. I'm very appreciative of your support. The LCAP is really a process of everybody doing it together. It was really challenging for us when we put it together the first year because we didn't, we didn't and shouldn't be working in silos, we all had to work together. So besides the LCAP survey to get input from our parents, from our staff, we also work with the school site council, and that's made up of parents and teachers as well. So throughout the year, we're looking at what are our needs? What are the needs that we're seeing based on the programs that we have? How are we using our categorical funding? How are we using our general funds in order to support our kids? So based on the identified needs that we came up with and with input, we also take a look at, okay, well, what did we do well in this year as well? So what did we do well with and what areas do we still have to do? So we did make incremental increase overall in the LA and math for all students. We implemented something that's called A2I Professional Support System. We started with exciting, we're doing it with PaaS. And so it's in kinder and first grade. And it's how do we ensure that when our kid gets to third grade, that 90% of our kids are reading at grade level? So that was a big thing this year. We're rolling it out with second grade as a grant. So half of it is a grant and half of it we're also paying for that. But that's a great system for our kids to make sure by the time they get up there, they're reading. Then we also looked at what type of supports and interventions do we need to do in class before, after school? What are the gaps that are struggling readers to have? For us in particular, we're finding our English learners are struggling quite a bit. So that's an area for us at Aces that we really want to focus in on. We successfully implemented our first annual Math Literacy Night, and I was very grateful to our fifth grade teacher, Michael, who used to work as a math coach with LAUSD. And so we took the idea of math and literacy and how do we invite parents to come with kids? So, and I should have nice pictures to show you, but it was great because parents came with the kids and then through a book, and we have reading it, we were able to, um, show how math is an activity that parents can do because math has become very complicated, um, or a little bit more difficult to understand when a parent looks at someone or goes, how do I help my child? So we, uh, were working with the parents to give them ideas and suggestions of, these are ways that you can do it, even if it's a book and it's in the literacy, there's math around it, how we can, um, help our kids. Um, sometimes I feel like, parents feel like, I don't know how to help my kids, right? I don't, maybe I don't speak English, or I don't understand it. And so our job is to try to say, there are many things that you're already doing that are very supportive of your kids, we want you to be doing it, and there's some more ways, um, that you can help kids. Um, big, uh, focus on mathematics this year, um, and looking at different, uh, strategies, instructional strategies. Um, again, it's exciting to work, um, with all the principals and actually walk through all of the classrooms, all of it together, all the way from elementary, all, all the way to high school, to see what does it look like in kinder, what does it look like in middle school, what does it look like in, in high school, so that we can get better aligned with that. And dialogue is a really huge piece of mathematics nowadays and to be able to explain your, your reasoning and what you're thinking to do. Um, so that's an overview of our highlights. And then the need is a continued increase in systematic professional development. Um, we want our teachers and our students to build their conceptual understanding of mathematics. Sometimes teachers, I mean, I know for myself, math was not my, no, I shouldn't say that, wasn't my favorite thing, but I recognize that. And so helping teachers feel more comfortable with mathematics, um, and how to work through that with kids. Um, and then using the different scaffolds, um, that we have for our English learners so that we can help them increase their performance on, uh, math, both in the LA and math, provide more literacy resources for levels reading, so I'm so glad to hear about the budget. Uh, provide more meaningful and variety of opportunities for parent involvement and workshops. I think we have fallen off in the last several years with parent workshops and involvement, so we really want to look at how can we support, um, our parents for the things that they're, not just asking for, but, um, I want to say screaming for. Um, so there's a really great need to, uh, to build a better connection with parents. Support them here at school so that they can help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frances, Mr. Redding, you guys are getting real formal, Madam President.
Would you mind highlighting, Mr. Redding, would you mind highlighting just the ones that are specific to TAS, different from what ACES brought forward?
Yeah, um, so I think they, uh, the partnerships and the connections between stakeholders is the big, uh, highlight here at TAS. Our partnership with My Voice Matters, um, the Journalism and Writing Initiative at the school site, um, really highlights the area of ensuring that, uh, we're providing, uh, extracurricular resources and opportunity for our community and our kids, which I think is really important, and partnerships with universities. Um, and some of the highlights, we had a, uh, a really high level of satisfaction in, uh, school and teacher communication that includes the front office, our teachers to the administrators. That was one of our highest ranked areas. Um, and I, those are, are similar to ACES. Uh, some of our identified needs, um, obviously want to continue our systematic of professional development across the schools. Uh, providing more courses and activities is a big one. It's identified both by staff and by parents, and it's being constantly talked about. Uh, that the general consensus is that providing the core, uh, instructional courses is not enough. They want music, they want access to different activities to increase interest and, uh, create more excitement, create a better culture at the school site. Um, increased monitoring of LTL, uh, the long-term English learners growth is gonna be really important. Um, those students are generally very, they struggle at the school site. Um, the introduction of NGSS science is gonna be a, a big identified need in the upcoming year. Studies on the campus is gonna challenge. Um, expansion of the after-school clubs and activities. And that follows online of, of having a broader course of study and access to different coursework and activities at the school site.
Frances, uh, when students graduate or matriculate from ACES as sixth graders over to seventh grade, what kind of support do they get so that they maintain their bilingual opportunities that they've had at ACES?
Uh, last year, we started off, um, offering Spanish as an elective. Um, it was, we, I met with the ACES parents and it was a really big item. Um, the idea that we wanted to evolve that program, let the ACES parents know that we would be enrolling their kids into a, uh, Spanish classroom. Uh, this year, we're expanding that program to the extent we could only allow students one elective per our schedule this year. So the, the problem with that is, so if we had a student who had an ELD class they needed to take, they could take Spanish.
Yeah.
We were able to resolve that this year so that now all the ACES students can go into the Spanish elective program and they're able to have two electives. And so this allows for the continuity of the program. And we're also partnering, partnering with Walton and Burke High School, uh, so that those students can be tracked. And I know this year, we had a number of TAS students so straightened to TAS, uh, Spanish 2.
Excellent.
And I'm sure many of those are ACES, ACES families and kids.
Thank you, thank you. Always worried about, not worried, but concerned about the support that kids maintain their bilingual frame once they leave ACES. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So highlights for what? Um, so one of the highlights we have is, um, we just wanted to build a positive school culture for students. We had about, um, so just, um, by increasing the STEM programs, different programs like that first. Um, and the other thing that we did this year was we actually increased the number of, um, constations for Yale students, um, from 7.9% to 27%. We may not be able to sustain that because it's a one-time deal, um, but we're definitely working towards it, making sure that our students are qualified as well. Um, and then the other thing was, um, increasing the number of, um, rigorous, I guess I could say, um, LHA tech dual enrollment classes with our students. So like I said, um, earlier, we're increasing that number as well. So we're doing classes like, um, political science, um, I think we have one of our, they're giving sign language. And, um, so those are more difficult classes. Um, and then also, one of the needs that we have, many of the needs that we have is, um, our ADA was only 91%, so we are looking at how can we increase that number this year. Um, one of the things that we need to build in place is the MTSS. We have a dean, academic, academic dean is coming in and she's gonna help.
What's the MTSS?
Multi-tier system support.
Thank you.
Uh, multi-tier system support, and then our academic dean's gonna be working with.
Is that like RTI? Back in the day?
RTI, RTI, TBIS is part of that.
Okay, good, thanks.
And so we're gonna work with Dr. Bean.
Okay, sorry, for the uninitiated.
See, we need glossary still, so, um.
What is it?
So multi-tier.
Like, like a second grad?
Multi-tier system of support is basically, um, looking at, um, and, and we're just developing our understanding together in terms of what that means. My understanding is, is that we're developing different level of support for each student that are at different levels. But tier one would be those students who are, you know, they're coming to school, what are your basic needs? And tier two are kids who are, who may need some additional support, counseling, um, referrals to different services, things like that, so.
Okay, alright.
So.
So what approaching students where they are?
Exactly. And we're identifying their needs and then, um, providing the services that we need to assist them. There's, there's two, there's two, it's a pyramid. And there's two sides. One is academic, the other is social.
Got it, okay.
So we're working on both.
Thank you.
So, uh, so the other need that we had is, um, increasing our ESPEC course. Um, so that is something that we'll be working on, and again, looking at academics as well. And then also making sure, making sure that our graduates, like I said earlier, are graduating not only prepared for college, but making sure that.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or? Okay, good deal. Um, the last presentation is actually in your executive summary, and everybody here read their executive summary, including the DLAB recommendations that they had for the board. Were there any questions regarding our DLAB recommendations? Where would the executive summary be?
The executive summary is consent item number five, district English learner advisory recommendations for the board for each of the different.
The laws always set out in the ads.
Yeah, okay.
Really, no other questions then?
Right, okay, so at this point, we can adjourn to closed session? Okay.
Did we, was the consent item expanded in the year in the, um?
Yes, it was.
Everybody's passed it, but, okay.
Okay, so we're gonna go into closed session at this point?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
And, um...